House.
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 Yeah, okay.
The housing council. There is no community we definitely avoid. What about the employees who do exist in one of their parts? Counselors talking about.
What we could be saw.
But they will. There you go. Go, go, go. All right.
Good, how about yourself?
Good, thank you. Okay, that's good. Good to see you.
What's new?
Oh, no, no.
Hopefully you got it for Rachel, right?
It's a little bit of work.
Bring the bags, okay.
You look a lot better than last time, I saw you.
I am.
Amen.
I am. Trust me. Better come over here. Is that a second? No. Okay. Okay, ready? Can you move on?
Yes, it is.
Call meeting to order with roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Here.
Mr. Sarah?
Present.
Mr. Delpass?
Here.
Mr. McLeister?
Here.
Mr. Buckner?
Here. Okay, Minnesota March 6, 2019 meeting. Motion for approval. I move that we approve as presented.
So here's.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Delpass?
Present.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes. All right, our first item on the agenda is a development plan submitted by the North Kent Board of Education for the North Kent Playhouse tied to what?
Thank you, Captain, North Kent City Schools. Haven't been involved in the day-to-day activity. This is being completely funded with private donations by the North Kent Playhouse. We certainly have played a role in approving different segments of the plan in terms of the architect and the bidding process and things like that. So have some information, not all the details. Certainly, any issues this board has with it, we'll sort of take it right back to them and their architects and get that remedied, so.
Okay. Martin, have any comments?
Couple. So we've done the review on that and the proposal seems to be consistent with the ordinance and zoning code. I would like to point out, though, unless the applicant objects, this applicant is being considered as the general development plan as well as the final development plan. That is an exception in the ordinance that allows us to consider these both and not require them to come back with a final development plan.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments?
Yeah, there's an empty hood. Where is it going to be on that map?
If you'd please come to the podium to ask your questions, otherwise it doesn't get picked up.
Need your name too, please?
Thank you, ma'am.
Where is it going to be?
Mr. Caplia is going to be providing that presentation on the project and giving a review and give the details of what was being considered.
Can you state the name of your address, please? For the right of five and ten street, now please.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Joe Caplia, architect, Union Town 1700, Eden Avenue, Union Town, Ohio. We have been working with North Kent School Systems and the North Kent Playhouse Group in developing this project. Basically, and again, I should scan these, I'm going to give them to you, fill up on the projector. But I've got just a number of prints here and I will show them to the audience then, too. But basically, to show where our addition is going on, and again, it's right adjacent to the existing auditorium. We are basically adding a couple lesson rooms. We are expanding the scene development rooms, storage for costumes. That's basically what's based on the under 4,000 square foot floor plan that we're increasing. And it's on the, and I did it two places here. This shows where it is in relation to the existing auditorium. Existing auditorium is in yellow. The little red area is a storage area, it's 104,000 square feet. But to make a bigger impact, and I'll show you in just a minute, to make a bigger impact, our addition is basically 1% of the size of the total complex. This little, this is my key plan, so it's the scale, but a small scale. This little red space right here is our addition. The rest of this 300,000 plus square feet is our proposed addition. And again, here, I have this small little area here, it's on the south side of the building. And from Seventh Street, we're basically, I'm going to say, 670 feet off of Seventh Street, where the front edge of that addition will be located. I wanted to give some idea of how far back it is. And I brought a picture, too, of what it looks like initially and then what we're showing there. The project includes new seats at the auditorium. Currently, there's a flat level with chairs on, movable chairs, and then there's a work area so that students can use it. And then it's also for presentations. And I've been to the students there over the years, Walsh used it at different times, a North Kent group had used it, and it's just not conducive to true theater. So now they're looking and picking up all new seats in the area as part of putting in new air conditioning, upgrading the units there. As I talked about, two lesson rooms, a scene shop. An important part of the program is what they call their black box, which is their rehearsal space that they practice, or they can use the stage and then they can use this other space, too. And then the major portion of that is costume storage. Again, as we talked about, the existing building is, I'm going to say, greater than 300,000 square feet in area. Our building addition is just under, I'm going to say, 39,82 outside of the walls as far as the addition. From a building height standpoint, our main building goes up to where the, to a 47-foot height. And our building addition, which matches the adjacent structure, is 18 feet tall. So everything that we have is fitting in, and I'll show again when I get to the elevations. So we're matching the existing building. The overall site layout, we talked about the 600 feet back. The, as far as the amount of area that we are disturbing on the site, it ends up being about .18 acres of disturbed. That's not just building, that's just the disturbed area, reconfiguring some of the landscape around the building. With the floor plan. And again, just for ease of recognition, the yellow area outline is the perimeter of our remodeled area. It basically is the existing stage, our theater area, the stage. The only thing happening there, we're getting new technology with lighting, refinishing the floor. That's pretty much what's happening in that area, and I talked about new air conditioning. We have the renovated scene shop, which is basically twice as large as what the existing one was. We have existing toilet rooms, here, green rooms, which are basically getting a coat of paint and that's it. And then you can see here, we have a couple, an office, and then our two lesson rooms, and then our black box, which is again our practice area. And then the biggest chunk of our addition is, is the costume storage. The, we're picking up some ADA requirements in there as part of this. We talked about the new HVC and the auditorium. Gary Cohen, our fire marshal, did ask if we could pick up and rectify a couple of sins that were left over from years ago. At the existing building, before even the original auditorium was added, there were a few old windows that were intact. And instead of taking them out and blocking them up to create a fire separation, they just put a sheet of drywall over it. So he and I spoke and we picked that up as part of the, as one of his concerns as making that closure to that part of the project. All right. From an exterior elevation standpoint, again, what I tried to do is, I highlighted the existing building in yellow, I mean, the base, the walls and the top. And in all the cases, our addition matches that 18-foot height, not larger, not less. And then we're picking up the dry-let van, synthetic plaster van that goes on that part of the building. We're picking that up around the whole perimeter of our addition. So again, the intent is, once the project is done, it should look like there was never an addition put on. We should match up everything that's on there, and it shouldn't look like anything different on that. Now, the other thing that I've added on this sheet, I took a picture of the location and you can see the manning and stuff, which we will continue. It's a little bit dark, but the reason I bought this is I wanted to show you the landscaping. Martin gave me a heads up, he said that the committee on past projects have been bringing up landscaping as a need and as a requirement. And we checked with the school and they really have no landscaping there now. We've got a couple of old trees, and these couple of trees are going to be coming out because of the project. But we don't have any new landscaping going in because it's maintenance and it's extra cost. So again, I'm just sharing, Marty, you know, he warned me that that could be a consequence that comes out of the meeting, and if it is, we have to deal with it. But the school board would rather not add that for more work, more cost.
If you would, could you show a couple of those?
Oh, I'm sorry. I will do that.
Focus back so they'll see this as well. Thank you.
You can't really see my back. Okay. We'll do here first, I'll do this. This is a picture of the area that's affected, and we've got just a blank brick wall there now that goes up 18 feet. What we're doing is we're expanding the brick wall with the plaster, cement plaster on the top. We're expanding that further over so that it'll be more of a finished look like that than just bare brick wall. And then this, basically. This is the elevation again. This is existing, existing. What we're doing is matching up adjacent to that the same construction. So when it's done, again, our hope is that no one recognizes that this 1% added on to this existing building will even be noticeable. I guess I just asked, any questions, comments from the board?
Any further comments for? Questions or comments from the board? Hey, I think. Go ahead.
Mr. Caplia, I'm going to. What is the proposed construction schedule for this project?
During the school vacation. They are anticipating getting in there. I'm going to say, we have a couple of different dates. I know that there's a May 15 early start, and then there's a later start because of events going on at the school. And we have an August, later August date, and then a September date that we have the need to complete it. So that's summer vacation.
This is probably a question for Mr. Hennig, but the applicant is the Board of Education, but the user is the, is the North Kent Playhouse. What is the relationship that exists between those two organizations? Can you explain that, please?
So in the 1990s, in preparation for the completion of the Unified Hoover High School, at that point in time, a financial donation was made, you could argue it was a donation not, for two 20-year leases by the North Kent Playhouse. They executed their second 20-year lease approximately two years ago, so they've got about 18 years left on that. And so that's the less or lessy type relationship for the past 22 years.
Right, thank you. One thing, though, Mr. Wallace. From my understanding, though, some of the spaces are still going to be reused.
Correct, and there's some dedicated spaces. Will still, will still function as the owner, per se, if and when we ever get to the end of the lease.
Correct, correct. I just wanted to clarify. I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other questions? I think before we take a load off, you, we need to drop to the conditional use permit and get that, because if, just because of the point, if that is not approved, so we'll hold off the vote on the development plan until we have consideration of the conditional use permit.
Mr. Flutner?
Yes.
We need a motion to table the conversation while we're dealing with something else on the agenda.
I don't, I don't know that we need technical, but. And, and the reason for the conditional use permit is this, the school is on R70's own land, and that is what triggers the conditional use permit. Tim or Martin, do you want to?
Certainly before we begin, because a conditional use permit is for an education hearing for anyone that believes that they're going to speak and offer evidence into the record for the board to consider in making its decision, if we could have the clerk swear you in?
Or the court reporter, if you would?
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give in this cause will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. I don't, anything further to add because of the conditional use?
I guess the only thing I can say is that basically, our conditional use is for school system, and again, we're adding to the school system for the project. I know Martin and I had discussed that possibly as a long-term solution to not have to address this, this exception to go through the conditional use is to look at doing, similar to what Walsh had done over the years, is to go do a PNI district. But that would be a zone change, and that would take longer than what we can accommodate as part of this. But we had talked about that may be a potential solution to the long term of having the R70 district.
Thank you. Yeah, and I was going to bring that up later. I would certainly leave it up to the school. Certainly, public education is permitted with R70. But if you want us to do that, I would say, I would offer that the planning commission would instigate that zone change, having it's consistent with how the land is currently being operated. And we could have a public hearing on that at our next scheduled meeting. I certainly, you know, that would save you the hassle and the bother of submitting the zone change request, the planning commission can do that on your behalf.
Yeah, without any pressures.
If you would let Martin know.
And as, as Mr. Chairman, I might add that, you know, there are a number of other schools in the city that probably could benefit from that same scenario, so maybe.
Would you, would you evaluate the zone in that part, and if other schools are impacted in the same fashion?
Yeah, that's a great idea. I would like to be able to clean up the zoning map a bit further. One caveat, though, kind of further on what Mr. Caplia and I talked about is, in the Parks and Institutions zoning, there is essentially the conditional uses and the permitted uses. And there's a, the caveat is, is if it's, if that proposed use is within 300 foot of a residential district, it's still a conditional use permit, unfortunately. But if, say, the school activity in this case is further than 300 foot from the residential zone district, then it's a permitted use out there.
Yeah, I would ask Martin to provide the school with the, what's involved in the PNI district, if there are other restrictions or concerns that may develop down the road. Let, make you aware of that, so you, before you make the decision whether you want us to proceed with the zone change.
And Mr. Ben Gundy and I, earlier today, were looking at, there's, there's actually a small handful of parcels. I believe there's, there's one that's quite small and perhaps replat to.
It's not.
Bring all of these together that North Kent High School is, is perhaps on one single parcel instead of having a couple of those. Yeah, there, excuse me, and that would be one of the other nuances with the zone change. Currently, the, several of the parcels, actually, all of the R70 parcels are non-conforming to the R70 use anyway. The parcels as situated, some of those would also be non-conforming in the Parks and Institution, where if, if you did apply to merge all those parcels, that you would then be conforming to the zone district. But that's certainly at the school's discretion, if they so choose to do so.
It would also help by making property lines go away and making setback distances lesser, that just happened around the perimeter, not in the middle of everything.
Thank you, yes, from a building code perspective, there are benefits as well to the plan.
So if you want to take that under consideration, you know, let Martin know.
Yeah, I'll call up with you tomorrow, if that's okay, for the work then.
Thank you. In fact, you know, the Drack and Ballfield is currently PNI, and that's the only part of that property up there, so let, let us know. So let's proceed with the conditional use permit. Anybody from the audience have any comments? Any questions or comments to the commission?
I move that we approve the conditional use as a question.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Delpass?
Yes.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes. Okay, we're now back on approval, for the approval of the development plan. As Martin indicated, it is a preliminary and final combined, so any further discussion on that? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the development plan that's submitted.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Delpass?
Yes.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes. Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Communicating with Martin. We will get that, we'll let that be. Next, final item on our, next item on our agenda is a zoning amendment to Section 1171 02. Superintendent Wilson Inspection of the City's Codified Orders to replace the Superintendent's Reporting Official from the City Engineering Director Administration.
Tim? I believe I can help with that. This amendment, actually, if you're, two spots in the top of that, where this, one within section four, planning zoning, one under general ordinances. Council has already amended the one under general ordinances, and it's, it's pretty much forbade this, which you see here, but since it falls under planning zoning, our requirements is to bring this before the board for its recommendation. And it's pretty straightforward. It's simply changing as written that the Superintendent of Permits, his direct reporting official would be the Director of Administration instead of the City Engineer.
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? I'm going to answer questions from the planning commission.
I have a question for Mr. Fox. So is there like an organizational chart that we can look at to see how this fits into the rest of the city's government administration? I, I don't have one with you now, but I could provide that to you. But what this does, at one time, the building department is actually, or the council office was, was down in the civic center. And as part of trying to provide a one-stop type of service or permits, there's been a reconfiguration of the building, and this was something I think that was, you know, somewhat overlooked as far as the reporting official, because as the city's attorney, I'm often buried in the code and point out some things that, that, you know, wait a minute, I believe the Superintendent of Permits reports to the engineer, but in practice, that was the case, and then I had pointed out that, well, our codified ordinance says otherwise, and once we caught that, we wished to rectify, we found it in two locations. And so we wanted to be clear that the Superintendent of Permits inspections, since Mr. Ben Gundy here reports directly to the city administrator and not to the engineer, they each report several. they each report separately.
And since this is a amendment to the zoning ordinance, it will, our recommendation would be to consult and they would then proceed with, treat it as a zoning amendment.
Yes, sir. But this started from council?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Any further?
Is the current director of administration accepting this?
Yes. Yes, indeed. His recommendation.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning amendment as stated.
Second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Duff House?
Yes.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes.
All right, the final thing on our agenda would be the housing council. These, or, part of the housing council is a representative from the planning commission. So, we would need to.
If you would make a motion to amend the, the, the.
Okay, yes.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add this discussion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I'll, roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Duff House?
Yes.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes.
Okay, so, since the inception, the representative from the planning commission to the housing council as the president of the, of the planning commission. As of the setup, your ordinance says it shall be a representative of the planning commission. So, is there any recommendations?
For perhaps those in the audience that may, may not be aware, and any of the board members, that the essential duty of the housing council, it actually means, once a year. And what it does is review the new applications for Community New Investment Act. Currently, that program has been terminated. And, we only have the active applicants. And the housing council reviews whether or not the current applicants for residential or two, whether or not they continue to maintain the property. Because if they vacate premises or they don't properly name the property, the housing council is within its authority to revoke the tax payment. And, recommendations from the housing council then are put together with the, there's a county board called the TURB, it's the Tax Incentive Council Board that, that needs. And one of the requirements is, our housing council has to be advanced in that to provide information for that board because it's a culmination. It's a group that includes some of our county commissioners, the county auditor, and they travel around and have the local meetings to determine whether or not residential and commercial property tax incentives should be accepted, continued, or sometimes withdrawn. And, my understanding is that for the history of North Canton's housing council and the CRA program, your planning commission president, Mr. Flutner, has been the representative and actually shares the meetings for the housing council.
Yeah. Unless council takes action, otherwise, if the termination of the current properties that have the, been submitted, that will be the end of the housing council, I'm going to say. I haven't come up with a continuation or a new plan. At this point, I think it's probably six or seven years yet. I think the last one that came on was the apartments up on North Main Street. So, one, and, and theirs was that, was that fifteen? Oh, so it could be another twelve years or so that they would be reviewing. Some of them are ten, some of them eight, some of them greater than fifteen, so. And, housing council met about a month ago and approved continuation of the current applicants.
Mr. Flack, may you serve on a current pay, correct?
I have it to this point. It's a three-year term.
Do you still want to continue?
I would, do, willing to do that.
I mean, I guess if you're not willing, I would step in. But, I would like to see you continue since you have been doing it for these years and you're very, providing with that.
It's one meeting a year. Early March.
And I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Buckner is retained on this council.
For three years. Because everybody had to be reappointed for this year. And I think there's still vacancy with a, an appointment that the housing council itself. You know, there are five or six that are designated in the ordinance and then two will be elected by, by the council itself.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Duff House?
No.
Mr. McLeister?
No.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
You have perhaps requests to see if there's a second motion to resolve.
Yes. Anyone have a, or the motion?
I'll move the nominee, Mr. McLeister.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Duff House?
Yes.
Mr. McLeister?
Yes.
Mr. Buckner?
No.
Now, I retain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this point, do you see anything coming before next month?
Potentially, for.
Alright.
Certified for the next meeting?
Huh?
Certified.
Uh, uh.
Because.
The, the day first, almost.
Yes.